Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Raycos.
Here. Nine President in chambers. Mayor.
Hi, thanks, Councilman. I appreciate it. Councilman Warple with the recognition for Steve Fowler today. Steve Fowler was with the city Hammond for about 20 years. I think he came in right around the same time I came in. He was in charge of recycling when we did it, and he was off in public works doing a great job for the city. Way too young to pass away, so we're gonna miss you, Steve, and I know a lot of his fellow employees are devastated trying to deal with the loss. So it all came on really quick. Found out he was sick just a couple of months ago. Found out he was terminal last week. He's gone this week. It's pretty incredible for a young man to go that quick. So God bless his mother and his family. It's really sad. So thank you for recognizing him, Councilman. Mayor's activity log. I apologize. It seems like it's a real big report today, but we have a lot of stuff going on, so if you bear with me. We all went together to see the Gateway Station. That's still on my report even though it was before the last council meeting. The entire Hammond Council and the mayor toured the Gateway Station in the 2nd District. Saw the potential, saw what's going on in the 2nd District. Really cool. I stopped, also stopped by the central firehouse a couple of weeks ago to congratulate Assistant Chief Ed Lamelli on his retirement from the Hammond Fire Department. Captain, Chief Lamelli is with the Fire Department for 30 something years. You know, Scott, 36, I think, something really, really long time. He's no longer with the city, just retired, but Chief Lamelli has a great job. That job is open right now. We are taking, we posted it actually on, and we're doing interviews for that job right now. It still hasn't been filled. We cut the ribbon on a brand-new pickleball facility located in the Gene Shepherd Center over two weeks ago. I apologize again. I wasn't here at the last council meeting, but that's going really well so far, the new Gene Shepherd Center. We're interviewing for that top spot as we speak. The hospitality spots also open over there as well. Those spots are all posted, and people are bidding on them as we speak. Attended the annual Hammond Veterans Day Parade. It went really well. The weather was perfect. A lot of participation from the council. I appreciate you all coming to the 5th District and participating in that great event. Met with Councilwoman Janet Vines on matters of importance throughout the city. Also met with Attorney David Jensen and Pastor Stephen Muncy at the Family Christian Center to talk about the old Bargain Finder's building. It's interesting history for those of you that are familiar with Pastor Muncy and Family Christian Center. Pastor Muncy's father, well Pastor Muncy was a Hesville kid. I don't know if you knew him growing up, Scott. They're probably similar ages, funny enough, but he grew up in Hesville. His father built his first church at the Bargain Finder Building, right there next to the Little Red Schoolhouse. So there's interest in the Family Christian Center of reacquiring that building and putting some type of food distribution center for like Meals on Wheels type of thing at that location. So had a really good meeting with him, and obviously Family Christian Center's got the money to get that project done. So good news for a building that looks like crap. It's great that Pastor Muncy and his church are interested. Attended the police monthly captain's meeting with the Hammond Police Department. Met with members of Highlands Christian School in the mayor's office, members of Highlands Christian School in the mayor's office about a proposal they're making for the 2nd District. Interesting proposal. Talked about another facility that has money and could get things done. They got an interesting proposal. It's, we're still fleshing it out, but I have a feeling I'm gonna be talking to you all about that. Attended the Crossroads YMCA grand opening of the Hammond YMCA. I want to say thank you to the Hammond Council for the support with the incentive package we put together. I hope you're proud of it because it's the biggest YMCA in the country. It's located in our city. It's doing gangbusters already. There's been over 1,000 new members since it's opened last week. Over 1,000 new members already. I try to go there on the off times, and I go there on the off times, and it's slammed in the off times. If you go there after work, if you go there on the weekends, it's impressive. It's just slammed. It's in a good way. As you all know, we got about $15 million of incentives plus some infrastructure work around there. So we definitely did our part, and it looks gorgeous. So thank you for the support on that. I met with, we're not done there, by the way. I know you all know that, but there's a phase two to that project. It includes going to the north into commercial buildings that are presently occupied. We're trying to work out the dominoes right now to move those buildings to another part of that footprint so that we can move and do phase two of the YMCA expansion, which involves outdoor pool, outdoor water slides, outdoor water park, things of that nature. And as you see, they do it first class. And so thank you for the help. Met with Mayor Hobart, Josh Huddleston, and Al Tocarreal. Brought him to the 2nd District. He wanted to talk to me about his bid for the Lake County Convention Center. Interesting points of view coming from Mayor Huddleston. Met with Pastor Polk from New Hope Missionary Baptist Church regarding Memorial Park development. Met with Randy Palmetier, Northwest Indiana Building and Construction Trade Council to discuss upcoming projects across the city Hammond and Northwest Indiana. Met with Talina Sisneros, a senior at Hammond Central regarding her letter of recommendation from me to support her bid to be nominated to the U.S. Naval Academy. This young lady is impressive. I know, I'm sure Councilman Tyler's familiar with her, right? She's completely impressive, young lady. Talina Sisneros. Remember that name, okay? Every once in a while, I meet young people, and I'm like, wow. I remember a couple of people I've done that to. One of them's sitting on the council right now. I had the same impression when I met with Ms. Sisneros. She was completely impressive, and she obviously is if she wants to be in the U.S. Naval Academy. So I was the guest speaker at the Crossroads Chamber of Commerce Coffee and Community Connections Meeting. It was at the Dean and Barbara White Center. I love going to other locations and then being, I feel real lucky that we have the sportsplex in our city. Although the Dean and Barbara White Center is beautiful. Conducted interviews for the next executive director of the Gene Shepherd Center. We're in the process of doing that right now. Hammond negotiations update. I'd say police negotiations are doing well because I have the final contract on my desk right now. So I'd say that's going really well. They voted 90 to 10, 90% in favor of the proposal we made to them. So that contract's on my desk. I plan to sign it after it's signed by the lawyers and reviewed for accuracy. Fire, we are, negotiations with local 556 continue, but we believe that we are close to extending a formal offer as we work to clean up some bargaining language issues. One area of focus is to retain and attract paramedic candidates to our fire department. It's one of the things that we've been losing. Like we were talking about how we're losing police officers. We were. That stopped right in the middle of negotiations, thankfully. I think once they started getting wind, once the Hammond PD started getting wind of the numbers we were talking about, they started settling down. I have a feeling after we get this contract in place, you'll see a lot more stable, a lot more stability with the Hammond Police Department, Hammond Fire Department. If there's instability, it's within the paramedic ranks. That's scary because we need our paramedics, so we're trying to address that and keep our paramedics strong in the Hammond PD. We train them. We want to keep them in the Hammond Fire Department, excuse me. The Teamsters, I'm confident that we will be extending a formal offer this week at the Public Works, Sanitary District, and the Water Department. We have focused on identifying differences between those contracts so that the benefits and pay are similar regardless of what subdivision of government you're working for. As a result of our effort, Teamster members will be more likely to seek opportunities throughout the city and provide for a better-trained and equipped workforce. Operating Engineers, we're working on that contract as well. So this year is ridiculously busy. We're close out police. We're about to close out fire. Teamsters will be shortly thereafter, Operating Engineers. So there was a letter that went out to your residents. I'm glad it was brought up today at the council lunch. It was a letter about lead in your water. Now, this letter, I don't have a copy of it right here. I apologize. I have a copy of it on my computer. That's really not gonna do you much good being on my computer. But this letter went out mandated by the EPA for water companies to send it out to their residents about lead in your water. We don't have lead in our water in Hammond, but this was mandated by the federal government to send out. We have lead service lines in our territory. We've talked about that. We don't have lead in our water. If you have a lead service line, we could test your water. There would be minimal traces of lead way below the safe limit. Hammond water is beautifully clean. Lake Michigan water is beautifully clean. We have, we're super lucky to live where we live. You go to other places in the country, their water is dirtier and less reliable than our water right here. So to see this letter go out and to scare our residents is really disheartening. It sort of tells me a lot about the last EPA, the last EPA, the one that's before Trump takes over, the next EPA. The last EPA was stupid. This did not need to happen. We don't need to send out a letter to scare American residents about lead in your water if you don't have lead in your water. And we don't have lead in our water in Hammond. I don't know why the EPA mandates these types of letters to go out because they go out, and then everybody reads it. If you read it real closely, it says, "You don't have lead in your water in Hammond." If you read it real closely, if you don't read it real closely, you're like, holy crap, there's lead in our water. And then you start calling City Hall, and you start calling the Water Department because you're afraid naturally. This letter did not need to go out. It was mandated by the last EPA to go out, and the Hammond Water Department sent it out. I apologize. I didn't give you word. I didn't get word until it was out already, and I've addressed that with the water company. If we're gonna be sending out mass mailings to our bosses, the water company is supposed to tell me so that I can inform you about that. And I could have told them. This letter is worded very poorly. I apologize. Hammond water is tested regularly. It's below federal limits currently, safely below. Federal government's talking about tightening up their limits. If they tighten up their limits, we're still safely below the tightened limits. Hammond water is clean. You didn't need to get this letter. We didn't send it out because we wanted to. EPA forced us to send it out, so I apologize. If anybody has any questions about that, please. We test our water regularly, so. Grants. I had information about grants. I'm not even gonna talk about it. I'll wait until Project Worker comes up. There's a lot going on in the city right now. I apologize for the long report. If you don't have any questions, I'll just go ahead and wait until the stuff comes up.
Anybody got anything for the mayor?
Mr. President. Mayor, in regards to the water, is there, can we publish the reports of how we test our water, what our findings are, just to?
It's on, it's on the Hammond Water Company website, for sure. But we could probably pull it from there and put it, my web guy's not here. He's usually at the back. It's another guy in the back today. I will follow the, because you remind me tomorrow so I can follow this up. So like what we could do, yeah, I would love to, but it's, I don't understand what it's saying. But people that are engineers could read it and say, yeah, Hammond water is beautifully clean. Oh, you might understand it. Yeah, so absolutely. We're tested regularly, Councilman. And there are, this is the, we all know that there's lead service lines in Hammond, okay? Some houses, if your house is built before the 1980s, chances are you have lead service lines in Hammond. Eventually, your lead service lines are gonna be replaced. It could be five years. It could be 30 years. And it's gonna cost a lot of money when it's replaced. The question is, who's gonna pay for that cost? Is it gonna come out of the federal government money? Is it gonna come out of Water Department money? Is it gonna come out of state money? These are things, because in Hammond alone, if we wanted to change all the lead service lines in Hammond, it would be $600 million right now. $600 million. That's why this is ridiculous that this letter even went out. There's no way for the federal government to get this done right now. It's, if it's $600 million in Hammond, how much does Chicago cost? 12 billion? There's no way to get this done right now. That's why it was stupid to send the letter out, especially when you have clean water. So for those of you in the audience that got scared when you read this letter, I apologize. Believe me, I had it out with my Water Department today, but they told me they had no choice. This letter had to go out per mandate of the Environmental Protection Agency, the old Environmental Protection Agency. The new one, we're gonna find out shortly who President Trump puts in there. I have a feeling the new Environmental Protection Agency is gonna look at all this stuff and laugh. I just have that feeling, so.
Mr. President. This isn't on the water issue. This is on police and fire. What was it, a year and a half ago, you came to us and you told us that we were gonna have to do something to keep the 1st Class Police Department and 1st Class Fire Department that we have in Hammond. And I'm glad that you said the negotiations are almost over, and I saw today, and I won't name the communities. They were posting on social media that they're doing emergency hires because they're losing police officers and fire department officials, and trust me, I know firsthand what a 1st Class Police Department and 1st Class Fire Department we have, and I'm glad that that's gonna be resolved. And I commend the administration for working with them to get it pretty much done.
Thank you, Councilman. Today in the newspaper, there's a story about Munster PD hiring a resident of Illinois with a questionable background, quote unquote, according to the newspaper, but it was widely reported that they lured that officer over with an $81,000 salary. This is a, that's the kind of numbers we have to compete with. Munster is our neighbor to the south. Our officers look at those salaries, and then they look at their salary, and if they're making in the 60s, and they know they can go to Munster and make in the 80s, they're leaving us, guys. That's what they were doing. Year and a half ago, Dave, we would lose 15 to 20 officers in a single year, which was unprecedented for the Hammond PD. This year, we were losing them until things got real in negotiation. I don't think we've lost one in quite a while now. I think we're hitting it right on the head with this, and it's, believe me, that's a big hit for us. I mean, the first year raise for the Hammond Police Department under the agreed-upon contract is 15%. That's the first year. It gets them up to where they need to be. We fell behind. I mean, their last contract was 0011. 0011 over four years. We're paying for it now because they fell behind. And we can't just say, oops, too bad, stay behind. They'll say, okay, I'm going to Munster PD. Then we're starting from scratch with a brand-new officer. So thank you. It's not a lovely situation, but I feel a lot better.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Recently, there was something in the paper, I think, about the town of Munster suing Hammond.
Yes, sir. Hammond Sanitary District.
What do you know?
They sued Hammond Sanitary District. Councilman Mark, I think personally, I think it's piddly, piddly. It's like tiddlywinks in the overall scheme of things. But sort of what this is gonna do in the overall scheme of things, because we've been talking about the Department of Justice and the EPA, the ones that just got fired, okay? Those people put together this master plan for water in the region, and we're a big player in that, Councilman, because we're the Hammond Sanitary District. We have customers like Whiting and Griffith and Highland, and of course Munster and Hammond, right? So we're a regional water player. So the Department of Justice and the EPA has this whole grand plan, and we're players in it. And they get Griffith to agree to the grand plan, and they get Highland to agree to the grand plan, and they get Whiting to agree to the grand plan, and they just assume that we're on board because we have this consent decree with the federal government. But part of us, the Hammond Sanitary District, we're also Munster. So if I came to the council and said, "Council, I need to do this. EPA is mandating it. The Department of Justice is mandating it." And let's say that you guys went along. You said, "Great idea, Mayor. A regional water plan. We've needed this for years," and you pass it. I'd have to go to the Munster Town Council and get that same thing passed. That's not gonna happen. Obviously, they're suing us. So I'm like, hey, feds, go get them. Go get Munster Town Council. Go there. That's your problem. Your problem's not here. We were getting ready to do it. So as long as they're suing us, Councilman, I put the brakes on everything. We're not going anywhere with the CMDF facility. We're not going anywhere with this regional solution that the Department of Justice and the EPA put together. Let them go to Munster and convince Munster Town Council what's going on. That's what it's really, in my opinion, that's what it's really about. It's about, because that's Mark, excuse me, Councilman Mark. The CMDF facility that they're talking about, $70 million, 50 to 70 million. That's huge money, and we're gonna have to pay for that. And to pay for that, I'm gonna have to come to you guys, and we're gonna have to pass a rate increase, and then we gotta go to Munster and pass a rate increase. They have already passed rate increases in Highland and Griffith. And then all of a sudden, Munster's gonna say, no, it's not gonna work. Can't do it until this is cleared up. So this is gonna give us some breathing room, the way I see it. Thank you, Councilman.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry to keep talking. There's a lot going on right now. As you guys know, it's in front of you, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November 13th meeting and place them on file.
Second?
Second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated November 6, 2024, and ending with claims dated November 20, 2024, claim number 9823 through claim number 10332 inclusive in the amount of $8,929,78.62.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
I'm, I wanna make a motion to amend an claim. I have it as 10323 in the amount of $5,000 to community title company for a payout on the home bound down payment assistance for a property located at 7424 Florida Avenue. I assume.
Second.
I'm gonna motion in a second by Councilwoman Vines. Now that claim number is 10323?
That's what I have it as, yes.
No, it's gotta be 10333.
Let me look again. It is.
You are correct.
Thank you, 103.
You won't hear me say that often.
10333. All right, motion and a second. Do I have discussion? Discussion? Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes. Amendment passes 9-0. Now the claims as amended.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I see where the confusion came in.
I do too. You want to amend that too?
We have 210322. It's one for Castanegas Incorporated under the Soft Insurance Fund. And then the last claim on the form is 10322. That should read 10332.
Right, that's where it came in. So we'll do, we'll amend that one too then.
So do I need to amend that too to just change?
Yeah, I guess.
I also make a motion to amend the claims to read 10323 as the last claim from 11/20/24.
That's where IT Savvy, ARPA in the amount of 166.
848.27.
Okay. So we have another amendment on the claims. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Let's do a roll call again, amendment.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes. Claims as amended, amendment to the claims is passed 9-0. Now, the claims as amended, we'll go ahead with the roll call because we already had a first and a second.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes. Amendment's passed at 9-0. Public Carries, we have none. Communications.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
This coming Friday, we will have our annual tree lighting ceremony here at City Hall. From 4:30 to 5:30, we'll have kids crafts, and then the actual ceremony will begin at 6:00 PM. And then on December 7th, will be the holiday parade on going down Indianapolis Boulevard starting at 10:00 AM. So looking forward to seeing everyone out.
Thank you, Councilwoman Alexander. Any other communications? I have communications. As Council President, I have received and will place on file 2025 Hammond Redevelopment Commission Spending Plan pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-14-12.7.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I just have one. Over the weekend, we held our fifth annual drive-through turkey giveaway. Thanks to the additional support of the Hammond Fire Department and the Hammond Firefighters Junior, we were able to bless 215 families with turkeys. Also want to thank Councilwoman Alexander, Councilman Raycos, Councilman Salinas, Councilman Spitali, Councilwoman Vines, Hammond City Clerk Robert Golick, the Affilia Stadium Center, Ministry Alliance of Hammond and Vicinity, and the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana for their support in pulling this event off. Like I said, this is our fifth one. And pretty much when it hits, we had some traffic control issues, but I think we'll be able to duplicate the event next year and hopefully give out even more turkeys to families in need. So thank you, everybody, for your support.
Thank you, Councilman. Also, after the parade, the holiday parade, HC3 is again hosting Frostyville at the Hanson Community Center, 2823 Martha Street. It will be Saturday, December 7th, 12 to 3. They'll have Challenger Learning Center, Winter Water Lab, Raffles, Santa Elves, face painting. So come join us for the holiday shopping and treats and entertainment. Any other communication? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Community reports.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Councilors of the hall will be bringing out ordinance 2428.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
The Capital Improvement Board met on November 18th, 2024. Item A, funding allocation number 218, the Hess signage and striping project, Hawk Enterprises in the amount of $406.40. Item B, funding allocation number 219, repave Erie Lacawanna Trail. The First Group Engineering in the amount of $19,800. Item C, funding allocation number 220, Kennedy Avenue Reconstruction in 174th Place to 169th Street. Supplemental construction engineering in the amount of $41,500. Item D, funding allocation number 221, Marble Street Reconstruction, change order number 2, Milestone Contractors North in the amount of $13,323. Item E, funding allocation number 222, 7,500 to 7,600 Van Buren Street. Resurfacing, change order number 1, Milestone Contractors North in the amount of $31,704.30. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Wednesday, December 4th, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School at 6:30 PM. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, December 3rd, 6:00 PM at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, December 10th, 9:30 AM at Irving School. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, December 12th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. We all know that this is the season of giving. It's also the season of taking. So please come to a crime watch meeting, learn how you can protect yourself when you're out shopping or when you leave your home for an extended period of time. Please come out and hear the tips that the Hammond Police Department gives to our neighborhoods because community is not just about me. It's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, introduction of ordinances. I'm sorry, ordinance, third reading, final passage.
24-28, an ordinance codifying the City of Hammond Homebound Program Down Payment Assistance and amending award and eligibility requirements.
Do I have a, do I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Final passage of 2428.
Final passage of twenty-four, twenty-eight.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to amend ordinance twenty-four, twenty-eight in its entirety with ordinance twenty-four, twenty-eight A.
There's a motion and a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
What this ordinance does is it expands the homebound program. And it makes it available to, in the original ordinance, um, police, fire, teachers, educational professions, professionals, City of Hammond full-time employees as described in provision one, which included deport authority to Hammond Sanitary District. And the Hammond Housing Authority was left out in the first one. This just amends into Hammond Housing Authority.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I know you guys talked about this in the last meeting that I couldn't make. This was given to us as a recommendation by the Northern Indiana Realtors Association, formerly known as GNIAR. This was at the Realtors Breakfast. They, as a critique of our previous program, was, the one critique of the homebound program was, it's not generous enough. It really is like so low, it's negligible. If you really want to make a difference, it's gotta be up in the ten thousand dollar area. And we took that back. Councilman Spitali obviously is our liaison to the Realtors. We took that back, discussed it. I know Owana, uh, in community development worked real hard. Dorell and her worked real hard making sure that, um, we can make sure that people that need to qualify for income reasons can qualify for the ten thousand for income reasons. And then if you can't qualify for income reasons, we have the other money that we use that's not, uh, federal government money that could pay for other, uh, you know, the, the, the police officer that wants their first home, so. But this is a good thing and I hope the council could support it. We've been doing this for a while. It's never been codified as an ordinance. If you guys do this, it'll be codified as an ordinance in Hammond for all time, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
One more thing, I apologize, Councilman. First home. If you want to like bounce from your current home to another home, you cannot qualify for this money. It's your first home that we're talking about, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment to twenty-four, twenty-eight?
Can it be your second home, but first in Hammond?
Interesting question. I don't believe so, Councilman. That's a good question. I can see where you're coming from. We want you as a resident in Hammond. Good question. I don't think under this ordinance that we qualify, but that's interesting. If there's a lot of demand, I think that we should think about that. Okay? Doesn't, if you're not, right. That's what I thought.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Mayor, when it says educational professionals, do we have a definition of who that includes?
There's probably a definition there, Councilman, but I know that this has been going for a long time currently, Councilman Barry. Police, fire and teachers, that's how it's been going for years. We've, we're expanding it by making it an ordinance to include the city employees. And we have inadvertently left off Hammond Housing, which is why we're doing the amendment today, Councilman. So we've always done police, fire and teachers. And quite frankly, Councilman Barry, I don't think a lot of teachers participate in it. So I believe it's defined in the ordinance, so I remember reading it.
Any of the original ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would just ask him, because I know there's a lot of individuals who work for our school city.
That are educated.
Who might not be actual teachers, but they still contribute to the livelihood of our students, so.
Scott, do you know the answer to that? We have an educational professional right here. Look at that.
It, it is defined as licensed educational professionals, so just to be straight, someone who doesn't possess a license would not qualify for the program, even if they're employed by the school system. It is licensed educational professionals.
So this would be police officers, firefight, in Hammond, firefighters in Hammond, teachers in Hammond, licensed teachers in Hammond?
Yes.
Including HAST? Does that, that includes like Bishop Noel and stuff like that?
Yes.
Okay.
If they're licensed.
For their license, right? And then city employees, Councilman. It's not for all employees. If it is for all, uh, for all residents, if they go through that program, it's going to be through Owana then, correct?
Correct.
So when you say licensed, it could also mean school leaders, principals and assistant principals?
It does, yes.
Good question. Like principals and stuff like that, did they apply? And Scott said yes.
Licensed mental health professionals, counselors, that's what you're saying too?
If they were employed by a school, yes, in that capacity. So a school counselor, occupational therapist, if they're licensed and employed by a school system in Hammond, yes.
I'd have a hard time saying no to somebody wanting to buy a house in Hammond, being honest with you. Technically, you're not, I mean, we want people to buy houses in Hammond, right? So like that, we'll just keep in mind that at the end of the day, if speech professional wanted to buy a house in Hammond, we'd be like, yeah, education professional, come on in, right? But these are great questions on what is an education professional, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion on twenty-four, twenty-eight A? Any other discussion? Discussion, roll call, and the amendment.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Twenty-four, twenty-eight A passes nine, zero. Now twenty-four, twenty-eight as amended.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Twenty-four, twenty-eight as amended, passes nine, zero. And that's all our ordinance for third and final, uh, third reading, final passage. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
Twenty-four, twenty-nine. An ordinance creating a new fund, Fund two, four, eight, six, for the fiscal year twenty-four Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act Implementation Project, awarded to the City of Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Yes, I move for final passage. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I move for first and second reading of twenty-four, twenty-nine. Yes, I so moved.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Salinas. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, this is a grant that the Hammond Police Department applied for and received two hundred thousand dollars, which is for, um, to support annual mental health wellness checks, mental health counseling services and critical incidents, stress management services for, um, our first responders and their families.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
My understanding, this creates the line item for that money to go in, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on twenty-four, twenty-nine?
President?
Yes, Councilman.
So it says the grant is to provide support for annual mental health wellness checks. So is that the police going out to do the checks at homes? Or is it, um, to do mental health wellness checks among themselves? And same goes with the mental health counseling services. Are the police providing mental health counseling services to the police? Are they providing it to residents?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, this is a grant that was applied for by the police department for the police department. So it is for our, uh, police officers and their families.
Thank you.
So it isn't, I'm sorry. So it isn't police offering these services to their employees? It's having money to make referrals for the police department out of the department to get professional help?
Mr. President?
I guess I don't follow you.
Mr. President? This isn't, this is for the police officers to seek, correct? Mental health and wellness implementation project awards?
It's for a therapist, for.
It's for the officers.
For officers who deal with trauma. For themselves.
Is the therapist in-house at the police department?
No, they would come in and deal with them. But if you have more questions, we could have the chief come in and answer these questions. I have no problem. This is not, I don't believe this is like drop dead emergency, has to go today. If we have questions, I have no problem bouncing it for a meeting. You have three meetings left this year, so. Okay, yeah, I'll get the chief in here for the next meeting, okay? I'm not sure, so. Good question. I think Megan knows, but let's just get the chief in here, he could deal with you guys, okay?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Sorry, we can still do that, but I just went to the website and it says the funds are used to improve the delivery of and access to mental health and wellness services for law enforcement through the implementation of peer support, training, family resources, suicide prevention and other promising practices for wellness programs. The FY twenty-four program will fund projects that develop knowledge, increase awareness of effective mental health and wellness strategies, increase the skills and abilities of law enforcement and increase the number of law enforcement agencies and relevant stakeholders using peer support, training, family resources, suicide prevention and other promising practices for wellness programs.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
This is the introduction of it, right?
Yes.
We can bring this up in caucus as far as the discussion to clarify it?
Do we have any more discussion on twenty-four, twenty-nine?
I promise, next meeting, I'm gonna have the chief here and I'll have Ben Stambaugh, who's the wellness officer, so that we could shed light on what we all have questions about. I'm not sure of the answer to it and I don't want to guess. But it's first and second, so they'll be here for the next meeting.
Yes. Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Um, in the, uh, in lieu of the discussion here, I think I will, uh, request a committee meeting on December ninth at five fifteen.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
What committee?
Mr. President, uh, when it's, when Barry, Councilman Tyler was reading about peer support, usually peer support means somebody within the department is trained to provide support to his peers or his peers. So that's, so the question's out to me is, are we training somebody in-house to do these services?
Councilman Mark can answer. If we are, it's, it's Ben. That's why I think Ben should be here for the next meeting. He is, serves as like the wellness officer. He's an actual uniformed Hammond Police Officer, Ben Stambaugh, but he's also like the wellness officer and this is through him and through his initiative. So I'll have the chief and Ben at that, at the next meeting and you guys could ask him. And I know that's, this is your area of expertise and it's not mine, so. Yeah, I'll make sure that the right people are here.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Committee meeting at five fifteen on December ninth. Any further discussion? House of the whole. We don't have any other committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, twenty-four, thirty.
Twenty-four, thirty. An ordinance creating a new fund, Fund two, four, eight, seven, for the fiscal year twenty-four Cops Technology and Equipment Program, awarded to City of Hammond Police Department.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
I move for first and second reading of twenty-four, thirty.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion for first and second reading?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, this is to establish a new line item for the controller for, uh, the funding of a grant that was applied for by the Hammond Police Department and received in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop and acquire, um, effective equipment technologies and interoperational communications, uh, equipment. From what I understand, this will be for, uh, to enhance the license plate readers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. First and second reading, twenty-four, thirty passes nine, zero. That completes our introduction of ordinances. Next up, resolutions.
Resolution twenty-four R dash twenty A two. Resolution of the Hammond Common Council approving a declaratory resolution related to creation of an economic revitalization area.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines?
Yes, I move for final passage of twenty-four R twenty A two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, this is to, this is a declaratory resolution to establish a re, uh, economic revitalization area, uh, way up north. It's where, uh, State Line Energy used to be. There's, uh, fifty to sixty acres up there and we would like to, uh, establish that as an economic revitalization area.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, I do need to schedule a public hearing on December ninth, which is prior to the confirmatory resolution.
It'll be during our actual meeting then, right? Confirmatory?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
This is an important project that Councilwoman's carrying. It's a very important project and it's got timelines. And I know every councilman has been spoke, has had a conversation with either myself or with Hammond Economic Development Team. We have three meetings left in this year. And the precipitating factor for this whole thing, and I know this has been discussed with you and I know that the public's listening right now, I just, this has to go down before the end of the year, if it's gonna happen. And it's a, the biggest investment in the history of the City of Hammond. So this is important, that this hap, this passes. Most, a data center, almost all the investment a data center make is taxes up, meaning it's not gonna go towards the one, two, three tax caps. But what you can do with these developments is make pilot agreements with them. Pilot, payment in lieu of taxes. I know you all know that. Pilot is, if I made a deal with Purdue Northwest, they don't pay property taxes, but you can make a pilot arrangement with Purdue Northwest where they pay for fire and police protection. This is sort of the type of deal we're making with this development, is a pilot arrangement. And it's, I think it's, it's a good deal. I know it's a good deal. It's a better deal than any other municipality struck with any of the other data centers in, in the history of this state. There's a few of them that have gone down recently. It's massive compared to those, as far as what we get locally and the amount of investment made. My economic development team worked real close with the I E D C and worked real close with the data center developers. And it's really a very timeline oriented by the end of the year. And if it's not by the end of the year, we're gonna lose this deal. I don't, I'm not trying to be dramatic. I explained to you all why it has to be by the end of the year. I think everybody understands it. But we have three meetings left and this is an important deal. So if you have any questions, I suggest you call me or call Economic Development, call Scott Miller, call Kevin, Economic Development. We'll do anything we can to answer your questions so that we don't have any questions for the next few council meetings, so we can knock them all out before we get to the end of the year.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. Twenty-four. Twenty, twenty-four R twenty A two passes nine, zero. End of the resolutions, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Now that that's passed, just to clarify, we are gonna schedule a public hearing on the confirmatory resolution for December 9th at our next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. If I may continue. I don't know if it was mentioned, but I believe we have a tree lighting ceremony. I- I'm deaf in this here. And one last thing. Want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And, uh, I got a notification tonight that a billboard went up out by South Lake Mall, and my son's picture's on it. It's a fentanyl awareness, uh, billboard. And I know the holidays can be tough on people. I met a whole new community of people this year, survivors, survivors of drug abuse, survivors of people that were lost because of drug abuse, and survivors of suicide. And all I ask is, while you're enjoying your families, is if you know somebody struggling, it don't hurt to give them a call and ask them how they're doing. If you know somebody that's really trying, it don't hurt to call and encourage them. But, uh, I just want everybody to remember during these holidays that there's every family. There isn't a family out there that doesn't have somebody that's struggling with some sort of mental disorder, and yes, drug abuse is a mental disorder. And I know too full well what it does to families. So if you know somebody, in my son's memory, would you please reach out to him and ask him how they're doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I would like to echo, piggyback on what Councilman Warple just said, uh, to reach out to all families. If you know someone that's struggling with fentanyl or any other drug, uh, please contact them, check in, how they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Uh, I just wanna share with the public, everybody who's watching at home, that, um, I think everybody knows that I've been a high school football coach for 19 years now, um, even though I look this young. Uh, but I, I've had the privilege of coaching under a lot of different head coaches at my time at Hammer High and Hammond Central. I just wanna share with the public that our most recent head coach, uh, has opted to resign. I think some people already know, and he'll be, he's from Lowell, so he's heading back to Lowell to take a teaching position there and be an assistant coach there. Uh, so I just wanna thank Adam Hudak for his commitment to Hammond families. He's not from Hammond, but he decided to take this job, uh, when he could have been coaching elsewhere, and really poured his heart, his time, his energy into the young man on our football team for the past four years. Just wanna thank him for his hard work, his dedication, his commitment, and wish him good luck in the future. And of course, just also share that, that coaching position is open, so if there's anybody who is interested, uh, you can apply, I believe, through the School City Hammond website. Um, and that is, of course, for the head coaching position, head football coaching position at Hammond Central High School. Thank you.
I thought you were gonna announce you were applying for a job in the city of Chicago. It's not open yet, though.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. First up, Aubrey Zelenka.
Hi, guys. My name is Aubrey. Me and my husband started a nonprofit called the Hammond Downtown Redevelopment District Corporation, in hopes to unite the businesses downtown and share how wonderful Hammond is with all of our fellow people in the region. We started a cruise night throughout the summer on Mondays, and farmer's market that now goes year-round, every second Friday of each month. I've seen many of you sitting up there at our cruise nights, and thank you for that. I truly appreciate that some of you may represent different communities throughout Hammond, and you still came out to support the growth of downtown. I believe most of us understand that a downtown is the heartbeat of a city, and no matter how much work you put into other parts of the city, it will never truly be a thriving city until a downtown gets the love it needs. Although I've only officially been in Hammond a year and a half, I've been dedicated to the region and its people in some way or another my whole life. I also have lived in many other wonderful cities throughout the country, so I also bring a different perspective into the mix. I lived in New Orleans for a while, and a phrase I learned there was, "Where ya at, Jack?" There it means more of "How you doing, neighbor?", but here, I'm gonna use it as a literal sounding meaning, "Where ya at?" Our market downtown may not be the largest one you've ever been to, but it's bigger than zero. And I can promise that myself, the vendors, and the other businesses that have been dedicated to downtown, some for over 20 years, are still dedicated, and it will be there for you. And we promise, if you show up for us, it will get bigger, and we will get better, all of us. Don't let a little construction detour you, because it will always be going on in some capacity. Yes, when the train station is done and all of the other development projects, downtown will be wonderful. But I can promise you, there's already wonder in downtown. You just have to get off your couch or out of the other cities and dive into your own community and rediscover it. All of the businesses downtown got together, and we invite you to our holiday stroll on December 7th, just after the holiday parade. Stop and get your downtown passport to get it stamped at all of the stops. There will be hot chocolate stops, food festivals, shopping, free haircuts, music, historical tours, and so much more. And you get to vote on your favorite window display. Uh, downtown may not look the same as it did back in the day, but we can still bring back that nostalgic feel, reminisce about the glory days, and get excited about the future. We hope to see you all there. You can find out more info, uh, about that and other events at HammondDowntown.org. I urge the council and the city as a whole to come support the events going on in downtown. Again, at first glance, these events may not be the biggest, but we can't make them better without the continued support from our community, so I hope to see you all in downtown.
Thank you. Next up, George Steyer.
George Steyer, Robertsdale. I, while I share some of the, uh, perspective that the mayor has toward the EPA, with respect to this lawsuit from, uh, against the Hammond Sanitary District, I think you ought to take a closer look. Uh, this, this is the same, the same law firm that sued us, uh, early, uh, that sued us in the Hammond Sanitary District, when the three cities were involved, of Whiting, um, Griffith, and Highland. And we lost. And here, uh, like, like that, like that suit, it centered around the cost of service studies, that for some reason, I find, my own opinion, the mayor is resistant about who's gonna determine what the proportionate costs are. And this is what this suit is about. And it's a 20-page suit, 89 paragraphs. What's more, in paragraph 31, the winner gets to charge, make the other guys pay for the costs. So in addition to whatever damages that are potentially there, we'd also have to pay, if we lost, we'd have to pay, uh, attorney's fees and costs of the other party. So I sent a copy of the complaint to Liz and a, and appellate decision that came, uh, came out of the, uh, appeal of Judge Sadia's decision, uh, here in the, in the, uh, county court and, uh, to the Indiana Court of Appeals, that kind of outlines and discusses the, the, uh, some of the parameters that it would orient you, maybe get a better perspective. I mean, I don't have the, all the answers here. And some of the things the mayor says is right. For instance, that EPA might be a little, uh, over idealistic or maybe overly aggressive. And, and there's some points, I don't have all the answers. But you guys should look at this. This is serious. These guys, this, this firm that, uh, is, is representing Munster, they are utility law firm. This is no game here. They're playing for the marbles. And, uh, we've already got a bunch of costs coming our way anyway. You guys need to look into this, 'cause if we lose, you're gonna have to probably get a judgment bond, and that's gonna come through you guys to approve.
Thank you, George. Next up, Tom Burns.
My name's Tom Burns. I'm 91 years old. I was born and raised in Hammond. Went through all the schools in Hammond, graduated from Hammond High. But I'm really here to talk about my dad and my family. Our business has been open since 1908. Started on State Street, and in 1926, we moved to Holman Avenue. I brought a picture of you, so you can see what home, what homes looked like in those days. The home belonged to the family that owned Goldblatts, and they also owned the two homes on each side. But one of them was, belonged to the Hammond family, the original family. The other family sold out and became Hagan Furniture, that was there for years. I don't know anybody here old enough to know Hagan Furniture. But anyway, uh, I would like to petition to see if something can be done for my dad, who passed away in, uh, 93, uh, for our business. I thought maybe like a street sign or something, uh, would be nice on Mason Street, which is right near our funeral home. He was baptized here in Hammond. He, uh, went to All Saints Grade School, went to Bishop Noel High, where it was Catholic Central, then Catholic High, and was very active, was on the citizens' board downtown Hammond for 40 years, very active in other, uh, places. But I was just hoping that the city could do something for our family, since we've been here since 1908. My kids all went to Hammond High. I've got, uh, five generations at All Saints Church downtown Hammond. I'm trying to think of anything else about me. I went in the Navy for a couple of years, then came out and worked for my, uh, dad, worked for, I can remember my grandpa. He died in 1948. I've worked at the funeral home all my life. It was a great privilege to serve this community, believe me. That was a highlight of my life, to take care of families that really needed help. And, uh, well, let's see, what else? Oh, well, my, my son now runs the business. He's the fourth generation.
Still there on Holman?
Pardon?
Still there on Holman?
Yes. 5840 Holman Avenue.
I'm sure Councilman Tyler, one of us will get ahold of you. I think that'd be a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone's would have a problem. I don't think anyone-
Well, I've seen a lot of changes in Hammond since I was a kid.
Yeah.
That's unbelievable.
Thank you for coming and showing us.
But Hammond is still my home, even though I live in Highland, because my wife couldn't walk and couldn't talk, so we had to find a place, uh, you know, a townhouse. But Hammond's still my town. And thank you very much if you went.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
My grandparents lived there, and then my mom and dad lived there for 50 years. I lived there probably eight years or so.
Can I just get it closer to everybody?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And next up, Ken Rosick.
Now I can leave. Believe it or not, just pictures, 100 years old. My dad was on the first basketball team at Catholic Central. Been active in the, all these years. Right here. George. There used to be four funeral homes within about four or five blocks on Holman Avenue, but we're the only one that stayed, stayed the course. I've got pictures of the original place. It was like a storefront on State Street and horse-drawn hearse. And I did get to meet the man that used to hook up the horses for my grandpa. It was unbelievable that he- Believe it or not, I have a picture of our hearse with our phone number on the door, 260. We still have that same number, 260. Only, only the 219 now.
Mr. Burns, if you could hang around after the meeting, Councilman Tyler and I would like to speak with you about doing something for you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing all this with us, Mr. Burns. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be here. I did serve on the Hammond Board of Health till they closed it.
You didn't have to bring that on the line.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Burns. All right, Ken Rosick.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Appreciate it. How's everyone doing today? You know, we didn't have many traditions in my family, um, particular traditions, but we did have one, um, during Thanksgiving. And basically, what it was, was to get out of my mom's hair. When she was cooking dinner, my dad would take me and my brother Jay out, out of the house. And that was exciting to us. This was a tradition every year, and he would take us out in the woods, different woods. Sometimes he'd take us to the woods he grew up in on Baring Street and then Parish, or even the Briar Eastwoods. And we would go supposedly rabbit hunting. Okay? We were gonna run down and catch a rabbit. Okay? That was the plan, each and every year, since we were little kids. And, um, you know, after that, he would take us out to one of the local bars, and we would play pool and pinball, and he would sit at the bar, have a couple beers, take us home, have a big meal. It was a great tradition. But, uh, year after year, we're going out trying to catch these rabbits. There's no rabbits, you know, I mean, you can't catch a rabbit. We would see a rabbit, impossible to catch a rabbit running there. And then it would snow, and we thought, okay, they couldn't run in the snow, right? Well, that's baloney. They can run in the snow. And, um, then I realized, uh, that year went, year after year went by, and we were never gonna catch a rabbit. Never. It was like believing in Santa Claus, almost. My dad never had any intention of catching a rabbit. It was all big roots just to get us out of the house, and excited about going out there. I guess you could say I was going through an Elmer Fudd phase in my life. But it was the best tradition that we had. My, my brother's going through a hard ti, uh, time right now. And I think I'll take him out and carry on that tradition. Then maybe we'll stop at a local bar, have some pool, play some pool. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Sorry.
Thank you, Ken. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.